Susan Walker, our chairperson, is not here this particular day because she's on vacation, deservedly so. She's a real hard worker, and she hates to miss the Tea Party meeting, but we'll have to start without her. Also, I would like to acknowledge our candidates here tonight. I know we have a few, and if you would like to, I'm going to start at the back of the room, and have you stand up and announce who you are and anything you'd like to say. Jerry Barnes, I see you standing back there. Okay, Jerry Barnes is running on the west side. Go ahead and say something, Jerry.
I just want you to vote July 31st.
Okay, you want your vote, July 31st on the west side. Who do we have? I see Jabbo Peters Patterson.
I'm Jabbo Patterson. I appreciate everyone's support, July 31st. Good to see everybody out here today. Thank you.
All right. Okay, all right. Becky?
Becky Denny from the east side. I appreciate your support and your vote on July 31st for early voting going on there.
That's Becky Denny. She's running for commissioner on the west side. I'm getting those confused. Okay, against Jabbo. All right, who else do we have here? I'm looking through. I see Nancy Maddox. You want to stand up, Nancy?
Absolutely. My name is Nancy Maddox. I'm an attorney. I'm running for probate judge for Pecans County in the Republican primary going on right now, and I would appreciate everyone's vote and support. Thank you.
All right, good. We have Sandra Rae Cooley in the back.
Hi, I'm Lisandra Rae Cooley, and I'm a candidate for chief magistrate judge this year. I'm running because I believe everybody should be treated equally, and I would appreciate your vote and support this year. Thank you.
Next, I see is Bart Conley running for commissioner.
Yeah, I'm Bart Conley, running for commissioner, District One in the west. I would too appreciate your vote, but more so, I'd appreciate if you're not busy Saturday night and you like bluegrass music, come out, take 53 West, Jerusalem Church Road, hang a right, go past the Jerusalem Community Center to the West End General Store. Between 7:30, band will start about 8 o'clock. It's the Highway 411 band from Fairmont. Very good bluegrass music. Come out and relax. There's no political speeches, there's no political fundraising, there's no political nothing, but having a good time.
Well, that's a good one. That's good. No political speeches. Okay, all right. Alan Wigginton, I see you standing over there.
Hey, Kathy. My name is Alan Wigginton. I am your chief magistrate. I'm running this year on the Republican ballot. I would appreciate your support, and I'm not sure if it's a real bright idea to invite a bunch of politicians to a place where they can't talk, they're just going to sit around.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Okay, I'm going around the corner. I see Marty Callahan over there.
Marty Callahan, running for District One West Commissioner. Glad to have you.
He's running for commissioner, too. Now, we'll meet our school board candidates here, so you get your attention. We get your attention tonight. Who do we have? Oh, Rita Flummingkirk.
I'm Rita Flummingkirk, and I'm running for Clarkus Superior Court, and I appreciate anybody's vote, come out now or July 31st.
All right, I see Judge Joe Roger Bradley back there.
I am Roger Bradley, and all of the rest of you said as well. Your vote on July 31st or before. Thank you.
I ran into Kathy Bruce, and she said she has laryngitis, so she might just stand up and wait to us. What you got?
I want your vote.
I want it in the court.
Court of the Court. She's running for Court of the Court. Okay, we got Marsha Jasper's.
I'm Marsha. Rick couldn't be here. He's at a funeral, but I still want to ask you for your vote now or July 31st, and also in November, for Rick Jasper, for State Representative in the South of Atlanta.
All right. We've got a Martha Zoller representative over there standing against the wall. You want to say something?
Sure. My name is Stephen Hall. Martha, this evening is busy doing a debate at the Republican ballot, but if you're looking for a solid conservative lady, a fair taxer, a true Tea Partyer for day one, Martha Zoller, remember that name, July 31st. Thank you.
Okay, have I missed anyone?
Steve.
Well, no, he's going to be talking tonight, so he's got podium. What?
My name is Kayden. I'm here representing Doug Collins. Hi. Just wanted to remind y'all that you're the ninth district, or is it consistent conservative, honey? That's Doug, and have plenty of literature, and I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all have.
All right, she's representing Doug Collins here. They've got literature out in the hallway of the ninth district, okay? For the candidates for school board and tax commissioner, come up here. We have an elected official here tonight with us by the name of Steve Gooch. He is our state senator, Georgia's state senator. He's running unopposed. How lucky are you, okay? So he will start off the evening by talking to us from the podium here, and as Marsha stated, Rick was supposed to be here tonight. He sends his regrets. He did have a death in the family, so he's in Tennessee, and hopefully maybe we can have him next month. But as we continue this, we'll have Steve to the podium first, and so, Steve, it's all yours.
Good.
Well, I am Steve Gooch, and I'll introduce you. And I am your state senator, and I'm from Delonica. I've met a lot of you over the last two years. I've been to your meetings. I've been in Jasper quite a bit, working with the commissioner and your mayor. Robert Jones and I have worked together for several years. Mayor Weaver and I have worked together for the last two years, and prior to that, I've worked with him in a different capacity as a board member for the DOT. So it's an honor to be back in Jasper tonight, and Marsha, I'm sure sorry to hear that Rick had a loss in the county. I did not know that, so I got here, and that's a prayer for you and your family there. And I guess I'm going to fill in for him a little bit, take up some of his time. What's being passed around is a really just a little bit of a highlight of what we passed in the Senate and the House the last two years. Before we start going over that, I'll let people get a copy of it. Let me tell you a little bit about my district. If you're not familiar, I'm the senator from the 51st district. I represent parts of Forsyth County, mostly the northern part of Forsyth County. I represent all of Dawson, Lumpkin, White, Union, Fann, Gilmer, and Pickens County. Now, under the new maps that were approved this past special session last year, Pickens County is going to be changed. You're going to keep me in about half the district. I heard y'all talking about the east candidates and the west candidates running for the commission board. Well, I'll be basically representing the east side of Pickens County, almost identical to the congressional map, if you know or if you're familiar with that congressional map. So everything pretty much east of 515 will be under 51. Everything, primarily everything over west of 515 will be under Charlie Bette. He's from Dawson and Whitfield County. He'll be here next month to talk to you. If you haven't met him, he's a good guy, and his district, I believe, is 54. So I'm District 51, and I think he's District 54. So Pickens County is going to be split in half. It's about half and half, but the lines vary a little bit north and south. So for most parts, east of 515 will be under the 51st district. That has changed. Currently, I represent the entire county of Pickens County. There's been a lot of good things that's been going on in the state of Georgia. There's been a lot of bad news that's going on in Washington in our country. We all sit and watch the news every day, and we know what's going on with the Obamacare, and we see what the courts have done to the decision there in the last few weeks, and that's most unfortunate. We're going to have to all get together and fight as a nation, take back control of our country, and start following the Constitution of this great land, and that's been abused and has been neglected for many, many years. And I've had to be the first one to admit, not just by Democrats but also Republicans, we've got to get our act together in this country, and we've got to get people back to Washington in the local office and state office to follow the document that we fought for over the years, and that's the Constitution of the state and the Constitution of the U.S. And I'm looking forward to whoever gets elected in this congressional race to go up there and fight as hard as Tom Graves has fought for the last two years. He's been a great congressman, and I really applaud the efforts of all his work and his highlights for the last two years. I think he's done a great job. Down in Atlanta, we fought for the last two years for some good conservative policies. As you can see on this sheet, if you'll go over, there's some good, really some headline politicians' dreams come true when you get out and be able to talk to a good group like this. Zero-based budgeting, we passed a bill. It was signed by the governor, and he's going into effect. It's already been used by some of the other elected officials, like the secretary of state's office. He's already started implementing it. He started implementing zero-based budgeting before we passed the law. He knew it was the right thing to do. We're going to see some big savings, I predict, in hundreds of millions of dollars over the next 10 years by implementing zero-based budgeting. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. We have to continue to look for ways to make our government more efficient, and we have to reduce the size of government. The budget was about $22 billion four, five years ago. It's shrunk down to about $17,000, $18,000 billion today. We've got to be careful, folks, as the economy starts to grow, that revenue starts to come back in. We can't just start throwing that money back out like they did six, seven years ago. Back in 2006, they were spending money like it was going unstoppable. We've got to make sure our state representatives and state senators continue to hold the line on spending at a state level. It's going to be real easy to be tempted to spend that money when it comes back in. We've got to hold the line, and we've got to make sure that we hold our department accountable for every dollar that's spent. Zero-based budgeting will help us do that. Pro-life legislation was passed this year to protect the unborn. I'm proud to be a sponsor of some legislation in the Senate that will help eliminate abortions, and that's something that we've fought over in the House and the Senate, both on the floor. The Democrats walked out on us here in the debate. They wrapped caution tape and crime scene tape around themselves and walked around the Senate chambers and walked out just to be grandstanding. But we passed that bill, and the governor signed that, and I'm proud to be a sponsor of that legislation as well. We passed a bill that allows you to put In God We Trust decals back on your tag without having to pay for it. You can now go to the tax office and get the decal In God We Trust and put it on your tag, and you don't have to pay a fee for that, instead of putting your county tag, whether it's Pickens or whatever county you live in. A drug testing bill. We've all talked about people that are on welfare, that are taking tannins, funds from the federal government. There should be accountability for those funds. Well, we passed a bill this year that requires everybody taking federal funds, the tannin funds that would take for welfare, have to be drug tested. We're happy that the governor signed that bill. There has been a delay in the implementation on that, and I hope by the end of the year, that will be fully implemented, and we can move forward. We predict there'll be millions and millions of dollars saved. There's a lot of abuse in the welfare system. There's a lot of folks that are pregnant that need to be working. They're abusing it. They're not taking care of their children. They're not feeding their kids. They're not putting clothes on their backs. Instead, they're using that money to go and buy illegal drugs, and it's got to stop. If the governor's going to hand out money to people, they've got to be willing to help themselves, too, and we've got to continue to fight for that. Help people that want to help themselves. We can't just continue to pay people for decades to sit down and do nothing when they're unable to work. So we hope you enjoy that bill, and we hope you support that, because that was a tough time down there, too. Illegal immigration reform, as you know, we passed a good bill last year in the House, House Bill 87, dealing with illegal immigration. It has been challenged in court. Parts of the bill were ruled unconstitutional, but those pieces will be addressed and be updated as time goes on. We're happy to see that bill go into effect as well. We've already seen some positive impacts of that bill and that legislation. People who are here illegally should go back home and come back in our country the legal way, and there's a process for that. We encourage people to come to our country and bring their families here, but we want you to do it in a legal fashion and pay taxes like the rest of us are paying taxes. So I'm proud of that bill as well. Hope Scholarship. Hope Scholarship would have been bankrupt this year if changes hadn't been made since last year. We fought with the Democrats on Hope. They wanted to continue to just give it to everybody as an entitlement. We felt like people that wanted to go to college should go to college, but they should have to also earn the rights to do so. This Hope Scholarship is a great thing. Zell Miller handed it to the state of Georgia years and years ago, and he's been recognized for it as a hero in that sense, but the fund was literally running out of money in a hurry. And part of the problem was more and more people going back to college and to trade schools, but the biggest issue, in my opinion, was the escalating cost of tuition and books that continued to increase without any kind of accountability. Now, the Hope Scholarship has been disconnected from the tuition. Tuition continues to go up, but the Hope Scholarship funds are going to stay flat, and so therefore there's going to be some disparities there between how much Hope pays for and how much tuition is. So the students are going to have to be responsible for going out and finding their own money to pay for the difference.
Yes.
And we also have to get the board of regents to start holding these folks on these college campuses more accountable for their spending as well. If everybody else at home is cutting their budgets and their homes back on their spending, we should expect the same things from our college campuses. And so the board of regents has heard the message loud and clear. There's going to be a lot of pressure put on them now to continue to look for ways to reduce costs and make their college campuses more efficient, just like you do at your house and your business. Just to touch on the criminal justice reform now, I'll close it out and talk a little bit about things that may be on your mind. We have a prison system that's overcrowded. We continue to build prisons. We continue to look for ways to prioritize prisons, to make them more efficient, to cost less money, but to be honest with you, we're not doing a good job of that. We've got to look for ways to reduce some of the population in our prisons. People that are in jail for drugs, that are trying to get back on their feet, but they're addicted. We pass some legislation that will help them do that, their accountability for us and drug course and so forth. So we're going to be asking our judges and our DAs to work with us, look for ways to take people that are addicted to drugs, put them in the drug course, give them help, and not send them straight to state prison where they're just going to sit there and take up $18,000 a year of state expense. It costs about $18,000 a year to maintain a prisoner, and we only pay about $8,000 a year to pay our children. Now, what's wrong with that picture? We're looking for ways to decrease those costs, and one way we think is through this prison reform. And as that gets implemented, I'm sure it'll happen this week, but we're proud to move forward on that. The governor pushed that legislation real hard this year, and we were glad to support that. I'd like to talk more about Agenda 21. I see you're going to have a program on that. I hope to come back next month on that. Come January this year, I want to propose some legislation that's going to address some Agenda 21 issues. One of them is property rights. Buffers, mountain protection, river corridor things. These are things that you'll hear about through Agenda 21 programs when you go to talk to them. Counties and cities are being mandated by the federal and state governments to implement these buffers and these mountain protection ordinances, and they're taking away our property rights. And I'm a big property right advocate. I've always fought for the property right owners. I own property in North Georgia and Lumpkin County. I grew up on a farm, and I believe that's one thing that we have to always continue to fight for, our freedoms and our liberties to own private property. We don't need the government coming in and just taking control of our land without paying for it, and that's what a lot of these ordinance are doing. So as a county commissioner, back in 2001, I was sole commissioner. We saw how some of these unfunded mandates were being forced down our throats, not only from the state but also from the federal government, and I'm ready to go to work to try to push back on that and eliminate some of these Agenda 21 criteria. So with your support and supporting Rick Jasper down there, we'll continue to fight for you guys up here in Pickens County. And I really appreciate y'all continuing to speak. My time is running out, but I'll be glad to take any questions if time is available. Thank you. Appreciate you letting me come.
You know what I heard him say was that he was aware of the United Nations Agenda 21, which is good, because there are a lot of candidates and politicians that are not. So we like it that you're aware of it, that you and Rick is, and that's our job as a Tea Party, is to get everyone here aware of what this sinister plan is, is what they're trying to do. All right, next, what are we going to have to do? The candidates, all the candidates, come on up and start sitting behind your name IDs, if you would, right now. And while they're doing that, let me give you some stats on the voters and what's been going on at the election office. I think this is pretty interesting. Through this past Saturday, July 21st, just this past Saturday, I talked to Julianne, and she stated that there have been 1,379 early voters in that little election office. So they had their work cut out for them. There are 18,000 registered voters in Pickens County. I think that the population's around 30,000, if I'm, if someone knows that. Is that right? So that's a pretty good percentage of registered voters. Primary participation, the primary election this month, July 31st, Julianne fully expects about a 75% turnout of voters. That is outstanding. How about this, 2008 presidential election? She said we had 80% turnout in Pickens County, and it was about 50-50 split, half early vote, half on the voting day at your individual precincts. It's a good county here, good voters. There are 27 different ballots here in Pickens County this go-around. Thank you to Atlanta, cutting up little old Pickens County, left way, sideways, and everywhere like that. And so unbelievably, there are 27 different ballots, and if you need to know your individual ballot, which some of you I see have not voted yet, including myself, you can go online, Georgia Secretary of State, and you put in the words or the letters MVP, my voter page, and it will pull up your specific voter page. Once you put in your name, your date of birth, and Pickens County, and you can look at your ballot. You can print it out, and that way you become familiar with it before you head into the election booth. Now, early voting is still going on. It continues tomorrow, which is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, ends at 5:00. If you do not early vote, then you will go on Tuesday, which is the voting day, and you will go to your individual precinct. Do not show up at the elections office. People have done that. So just keep in mind, if you go vote on Tuesday, you go to your individual precincts throughout the county. Early voting location, I hope you're aware of this, right behind Bigly Wiggly, that little freestanding building right here across the parking lot from our college, the elections office right there. And so you can either vote early at the little office before Friday or on Tuesday, July 31st, at your precinct. So it's time to introduce our school board candidates, our tax commissioner candidates. Here we go. We have at the end table here, at the end is Mickey Carver, and we have Michael Coward. They are running in post four for the school board. These two gentlemen are post one? I've got it wrong, sorry. Post one. These two gentlemen are running for John Trammell's seat. John Trammell is elected not to run, so we have two candidates going for his seat. Whereas in post four, we have Peggy Andrews is right there, and then against Urban Easterwood, who's the incumbent on the school board. Going down the table, we have tax commissioner, Republican candidate David Leister, who is challenging incumbent Sharon Troblin. Sharon is an independent candidate, meaning she's not Republican or Democrat, so you will not find her name on your ballot July 31st. She will be on the ballot in November. Candidates, in order for speaking to begin, we will start with Mickey Carver first, then Mike Coward.
Oh, my God.
That's what you get with Carver's seat. You know, I'm about well, so I know how that starts in the beginning. And then Peggy, then Urban, and then we go here to David, and then we go finally to Sharon. And you will each get about four minutes to speak. I think we're doing okay on time, and that will put us about 25 minutes, which should bring us right into a little bit 5 to 8, so we should be done around 8 o'clock with this group, and that will work fine. And I've got a timekeeper here by the name of Lee Batwell, and he's got wonderful signs that you can't help but miss, and one is 30 seconds remaining sign, very bright. Pay attention, and then time is up, okay? We're good listeners, so you're welcome to speak to us. We enjoy hearing you talk. Now, once the candidates are finished, we will have with us tonight also speakers on the transportation referendum, which is called TSC blast, very controversial. And those gentlemen that are trying to head here are Norre Leahy, Bill Hudson, who is a dentist, and Bill Evelyn, who had a job assignment in Huntsville, Alabama, so he's trying to get here, and that's why I put them at the end of our agenda tonight. But we definitely will have two gentlemen here, and they might be here already. But they will be talking for about a half an hour on the TSC blast. They are against it, and they will have a video. So all in all, we will wrap up our meeting by about 8:30. That's our goal. They'll give us a chance to mingle with our candidates, and then vacate the college by 9:00. So I would say let's go ahead and begin with school board candidate Mickey Carver.
Yeah, come on, it's here if you want. It's up to you. No? Good evening. I am Mickey Carver. I'm running for school board post one. We have four minutes to speak. I'm kind of a slow speaker, so I'll try to get as much in as I possibly can. But the reason that I started running for school board was because I felt like there was elements inside the school board that didn't necessarily have the best entrance of the students of Pickens County at heart. I've said it from the first time, from my open address in the paper until every time I talk to people, the same exact message, because that's the message that I believe. Pickens County has good schools. We have good teachers, and we have good administrators. Now, in order for them to be successful, the school board has to give them some of the support that they need. They do not need to try to micromanage the daily operations of a teacher's interaction with students. The students and the teachers, that is, as I've called it before, is what we would call a business, the point of service or the point of sale. Now, if you know how corporate structure is, your board of, your executive board does not get down to the minute details of telling the salesman how to do their job. You know, these teachers, they went to school to learn how to teach. They go to continuing education to learn how to better service the students. The administrator's the same thing. So as a school board member, it's not my job, again, to micromanage, but instead to make sure that our students are getting the absolute best quality education that they can get. There's a few things that we've got to do that I keep saying over and over again to do this. Number one, students have to be safe. From the time they leave their house to the time they get home, student safety is first and foremost, because without that, everything else is pointless. If one of our students gets hurt or worse, anything else we do is useless. Number two, we have to make sure that our students stay involved in school. Now, a lot of students are your straight A students. They're going to be involved in school because they enjoy school. A lot of your borderline school students, if they don't have the activities, the MFA, the band, the football, the on and on and on, to be involved with, they're going to lose interest in school, and they're going to quit going to school, and our dropout rate's going to be going back up. We can't allow those things to slip away. The third thing is our teachers. Our teachers need continuing education. They need our support. They do not need to feel like they are on the verge of losing their job all the time. Unfortunately, a lot of them feel that way. Just like anything else, we have some real good teachers, and I'm sure there's some that are subpar, but not, the subpar teachers should not make the really good teachers feel like they need to walk on pins and needles just to keep their job. Now, it's, it's been real recent that I've been in some school board meetings, that the school board has been addressed by a parent specifically. Won't tell his name, but he came up, he spoke his piece, and he was dismissed without so much as a thank you or any recognition whatsoever. Anytime a government entity decides that it's more important than the people that serve them, you have a problem. If you would like for your teachers, your administrators, most importantly, your students, to have a voice on the school board again, please vote for me on July 31st. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Coward, and I am running for school board post one. I'd like to thank the Tea Party for having us here tonight. Sometimes school board members get pushed down to the bottom of the list for not having a very heated debate or anything like that. You and Mickey have actually, I feel like, become pretty good friends during all this. I think that Pickens County will be very well served by whoever wins the election. There are three things that I would do if I am elected to the school board. First, I would thoroughly research every issue put before the board before casting a vote. I would make sure that all physical decisions are both a priority and affordable. And most importantly, I would ensure that policy improves education to our students. I look forward to bringing a positive attitude to the board and working with the other board members and with the superintendent, and to bring an atmosphere of excellence to the school. school system. One person alone cannot make the school system better. However, I do believe that one person with a positive attitude can make a difference. The taxpayers of Pickens County entrust the school board with their tax dollars. I feel like we should do due diligence to make sure we run efficiently. I will work for the county as well as the city of Jasper when it comes to the needs of all the taxpayers of Pickens County. All entities need to work together. We need to make Pickens County a place that people want to come and live and raise their family. The next several years will be crucial when it comes to the budget for the school board. Just because state and federal funds are decreasing, the taxpayers of Pickens County will have to bear more of the financial burden. I have experience in working to streamline budgets and making necessary cuts as finance chair of Jasper, and I'm at this church. I'm employed as a search manager at Dave Chevrolet and was in the same position at Lawson Chevrolet. There are a few businesses that have not been affected by the current economic climate. I have also served as a treasurer for the Atlanta Parks and Service Guild for the past six years. While talking to the voters of Pickens County, I have been asked about several issues. As for the percentage that the county currently charges the school system to collect taxes, I would ask the new three-person board of commissioners to reconsider that fee and look to see if we can work together a little better on reducing the cost of the taxpayers. I will not vote to raise the mileage rate unless I am convinced that the school system is running without waste. I would also entertain the idea and would look at raising the school tax exemption for the seniors from the current 25,000. I do not think we need to do like Gilbert County and just do away with it. I think it needs to be done responsibly. I believe that school choice is a good idea, and we do currently have school choice with a lottery every year, providing there's room in the schools to add students. My parents were both educators. My father, Roy Coward, for 36 years, and my mother, Kathy Coward, for 32. Each of them showed me the dedication necessary, not only to work in the school system, but to strive for excellence every day. You must have strong moral values and do what is right all of the time, even when it may not be the pocket. Almost all of my volunteer work has been working with children, coaching basketball, tee ball, baseball, direct department. I am the city president of the Pickens High School Touchdown Club, past vice president, president of the JMS Touchdown Club, and I do not remember a time in my life when I have not had a vested interest in the Pickens County school system. Thank you, I appreciate your vote.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Peggy Andrews, and I'm a candidate for the Pickens County Board of Education post four. I'm also a retired educator of Pickens County Schools where I worked for approximately 36 years. During that tenure, I have served in many positions that have given me a wide array of knowledge and experience. I've been a teacher, a media specialist, a vice principal, a principal, and a curriculum director. Whether or not to run for the school board was a serious decision for me. School board members are responsible for multimillion-dollar budgets, taxpayer trust, employment issues, and the most important responsibility of all is to provide the children of Pickens County with a quality education. For these reasons, I believe it's important to choose qualified people for our local school board. I believe that my background and experience have afforded me an opportunity to bring a unique set of skills to the board that will enhance the mix of those presently on the board and help represent the diversity of our community. My strong belief in teamwork will enable me to effectively work with the rest of the board to get things accomplished. Because I have sat on the other side of the table from the board, I know what it means to be responsible for all aspects of a school, keeping it physically sound as well as academically successful. I've proven that I can inspire parents and other stakeholders to be, to have confidence in our local public schools. I also understand the board's role in the big picture, setting the direction for the district and providing oversight and accountability rather than the day-to-day management of the schools. I believe that one of the main purposes of the school system is to engage our community and improve student achievement through effective governance. Being a school board member, this economy is going to be challenging. School systems do not have the range of funding that other local government agencies have. They, they can only use sales taxes for specific building projects and rely predominantly on the levied property taxes for the general budget. Even before this, even before the recession in 2008, the state has started cutting their funding, and the school system relies heavily on the state funds. But they have been cutting those funds for nearly a decade, and it's grown worse in the last years. If you look at the inflated adjusted dollars, it's much worse than the real dollars spent. Over the last decade, the state has shifted more and more of the cost to the local system, and the local school board can do nothing about that. Therefore, it's imperative that we have qualified people to make educated, informed, and responsible decisions regarding mine and your tax dollars. As I've said before, the challenge of being a school board member is great in this economy, but I think it's a worthwhile challenge. School board members are here to serve the students of Pickens County, and if we remember why we're here, and then we align our word with the system goals, we will achieve educational excellence. Every child in this county is a reason for you to vote, and I'm asking you for that vote. I have the knowledge, the education, the experience, and most of all, the passion and commitment to do what's right for the children of Pickens County. I'm Peggy Andrews. I am the most qualified candidate for Pickens County Board of Education post four, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the Tea Party for having us here tonight. Look at the candidates sitting in the back, and they've been through the rangers, so they make the rest. I am Urban Easterwood, and I'm running for reelection to Pickens County School Board. I've served you for 10 years. I've worked hard. Every month that we've met together, chairman of the facilities committee, I've been out many, many times during the week, throughout the week, watching our facilities, seeing what's being done, watching the money. There's a lot of times that we could have over-stamped, but going back and looking at it the second time and discussing with the superintendent and his people has brought change where we save dollars. For the taxpayer, the dollar is what our schools is about. For me, it's about our kids. I want the very best education that the children of Pickens County can obtain. It's not been easy, it's been tough. We are losing state and federal dollars. It is more of, I'm going to depend on what we in Pickens County are willing to pay for education for our children. It's not easy to make those decisions. And many a time, I've laid awake all night long, stating about, is this the right way? No, there's just there another way. I pray a lot, and the Lord has given me answers many times as to what we need to do in our school system to make things better and to work well with our teachers, our principals. If you read in the paper in the last few days, there's two new policies on the table right now. One governs smoking, the way I look at it, the tobacco use policy, the school buildings, the school grounds belong to the taxpayers of Pickens County, not to the school board or not to the few to make this decision. I believe that it belongs to the people of Pickens County, as I said, the taxpayers. And I think that we've had another Lord to hover us and crown down our throats, but we need to leave some things alone. Another policy is the absentee policy that's coming forward, that's on the table. I don't believe that we should, as a school board, be dealing with that. That's for the superintendent and the principals to look at. They have a mighty few that abuse the absentee rule. They need to deal with that. It doesn't need to be lorded over all our teachers for them to have another burden to worry about. Let them be free. Let them work in the classroom, work with our students, and educate them. And let the school board do its job. Our job is to set policy and govern finance, but we need to be careful when the policies begin to step on toes that shouldn't be stepped on. And that's my feeling about it, that's what I've stood for, that's what I still believe in. But I want our education to continue. We can do it. It's tough times. We've seen tough times coming for several years, and we're in the tough times. But I also know that Pickens County people, when the things get tough, they get tough with it. I appreciate your vote, your support, July 31st, and for the next few days of open voting. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is David Leister. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I appreciate it. I'm running for tax commissioner in Pickens County. I've been asked, why did you decide to run for tax commissioner? I had been mayor of Nelson, and I looked at my skills, my background, and what I was able to accomplish with those skills, and that wasn't being used in the most efficient manner in Nelson. I was also very happy that I have brought concerned citizens out of the community who ran and were elected as council members. Those council members are now serving and doing an excellent job of turning things around for the city. As tax commissioner, I would implement a plan of reviews to determine how soon we can get our taxes that need to be collected back in. As everyone has mentioned, we have taxes that are outstanding. We don't want to increase taxes to ensure that there are no increases in mileage rates. You have to ensure that the taxes that need to be collected are being collected and in a timely fashion, not staying out on the books for an extended period of time. And just briefly, I am running for the position of tax commissioner. I am not running against Sharon Troblin. She's a very kind and generous person. I just feel that with my technical and financial background, that I would bring something additional to the position. I've been a finance supervisor, data center manager, I'm a business analyst right now. These are all skills that would enhance my ability to increase the technological aspects of the job. I would also be committed to providing the citizens of Pickens County a quarterly report showing what our collections were and what outstanding taxes were due. I have children here. I have no plans on moving. This is where I live, this is my home. So I'm invested, and that's it. One other thing is, I hate long political speeches, and I'm not going to speak any longer. So if you could consider me for your vote, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to thank you, the citizens of Pickens County, for allowing me the opportunity to have served as your tax commissioner. Hi, I'm Sharon Troblin, married to Jean Troblin. We have three children, four grandchildren, and I've lived in Pickens County for 45 years and loved every minute of it. I began my career in the tax office as a tag title clerk for Joanne Long in 1986. At that time, there were no computers in the office, so everything was done on the typewriter or by hand. It wasn't until June of 1987 that Asset Computer Company installed our first computer in the tax office. I entered the mobile homes and property tax into the computer system, and it wasn't until a much later that our motor vehicles were added. Joanne Long passed away in July 1990. The special election was held, and Rachel Goss became tax commissioner. I served as her chief deputy tax commissioner for seven years. During that time, we were required by Georgia law to receive extensive training throughout the state of Georgia, and that training is required still each year. In 2000, Ms. Goss announced her retirement as tax commissioner. I had served as her chief deputy for seven years. When I found out she was retiring and had to serve as her chief deputy, I ran for tax commissioner, was elected, and I'm now on my third term as tax commissioner. As tax commissioner, I do not assess your property, nor do I set the values on your property. I collect the tax monies and disperse them to the proper entities. I am at a 95% collection rate on my 2011 Tax Digest. Peach State Assistance conducts our tax sales, of which I've had five this year alone, at no cost to the county. I also do the final accounting for the state of Georgia, as well as the QBE report for the Board of Education. I maintain cash books, the digest, verify the consolidation sheets before they're handed out. I have to prepare the grand jury presentations twice a year for our grand jury, and also prepare audit reports for our county auditors. While serving as tax commissioner, I've made many implementations in the tax office to better serve you, the citizens of our county, tagging your vehicles by the birthday, implementing the gratis system for tagging titles. Our office hours are 7:00 a.m. to 5:45 p.m. We issue handicap placards in our office, as well as collect sales tax for the Department of Revenue. When you come into our office, you will find a courteous, dependable staff that goes that extra mile to better serve you and to get you in as quickly and professionally as possible. We also have a website now, www.pickenscountingtax.com. You're able to go onto our website, make payments with credit cards for mobile homes, property, and motor vehicles. Our website's very user-friendly. We have helpful links there, as well as question and answers you might have concerning the taxation of your property. My door has always been open to the citizens of Pickens County, and if I'm elected, re-elected tax commissioner, it will continue to be so. I am a registered Republican, but I'm running as an independent because I serve all the citizens of Pickens County. I'm here today to present my qualifications to you. I work for you. My record speaks for itself. I'd like to ask you today for your vote to remain tax commissioner for Pickens County in November of this year. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and again, thank you, and God bless.
Candidates, you may leave your seats and go back into your families. You don't have to sit on the front row anymore, so you can head back into the crowd.